I'd like to call the May 20th, 2019, meeting of the New Canaan Board of Education to order. First up is to approve the minutes from May 6th. I have a motion. Julie, second? Yeah, all those in favor? Restaining, Katrina, thanks. Next is to review and approve the agenda for tonight. Have a motion? Jen, second, Katrina, all those in favor? Thanks. Next is comments from the public. To ensure the public's right to be heard, the board has set aside time during the meeting for public comments. Two minutes will be allotted to each speaker and a maximum of 15 minutes to each subject. Is there anyone who would like to speak? Okay, great. Oh?
Hi, Steve Eno, 133 Springwater Lane. I was at Rachel Lampin's Food Revolution event on Sunday, on Saturday, I mean, and it started me thinking about way, all the ways New Canaan community members can get involved in our town. For example, there's 13 official town committees. Yes, I'm gonna read them all. ADA compliance, audit, field, historical review, family fourth, pension, planning and zoning, SAC school building, seniors telehealth, technology, tourism and economic development, Wavine House renovation, and youth sports. It's my understanding that all of these committees, except for pension, have members from the community. Not elected people, but members from the community. And most past town committees, including the last two high school building committees, look complex, those look awfully like people who were just from the community, never served elected office, have had community members. Which brings me to my point. Despite repeated requests, administration and the board has refused to form a school start time committee with involvement from community members. As we approach a decision point, I can't help but think that any difficulties or failures will be driven by a total lack of direct community involvement in the assessment and the decision-making process. But it's not too late. There's a lot of town residents who would be happy to serve on that committee, all these people back here, myself included. All you have to do is ask. Thank you.
Thanks. Anyone else? All right, thank you. Next are reports from recognition. First up is the school start and end time update with Dr. Ledzey.
Thanks, yes, I just wanted to give a brief update on the feedback in the survey instrument that we, that was closed last week. As you may know, we kept it open through the weekend in order to encourage some more participation, and I think it really helped. The rough numbers, because we still have to do some data scrubbing and cleaning, what have you, we have approximately 1,500 students who have responded to that, around 1,500 parents who responded. We had over 525 staff members who responded, and at this point, it looks like a little, around 125 community members who responded. So, these numbers were quite a bit lower prior to the weekend, so I feel good about keeping that open in the communication that we had. Again, Hanover has to go through and scrub the final numbers, but they're pleased with the results, as are we. There was a question about, sort of, what do you shoot for in a survey like this? And it's really around 10 to 20 percent on the high side of response rates. And while we're not gonna get that out of a community of 20,000 people or so, I think certainly the internal work, the parents, the students, the faculty, it showed a great deal of interest and engagement with the conversation with work. We continue to do the, well, to implement the changes that we had earlier around our dismissals at both of the schools, with folks working with the traffic, to stop the traffic, to move the buses through, and see what the timing is with that. We've had some conversation with our bus company, DATCO, just to let them know that we're having these conversations, and that we may have other conversations in the future about need, based on conversations that we have with the board and going forward and going, and planning. And again, if there's other information that'll be helpful for the board, please let me know prior to the meeting on June 24th, so that we can be sure that we share everything that we have for a comprehensive view there. The, we look forward to that meeting to receive guidance from the Board of Ed for the work that we'll be doing from there on. And I hope, just to share as well, I was with about 25 superintendents a couple of days last week, and it was an excellent opportunity to learn from some of the folks in some of the districts that have done some things as well. So, this is a conversation that is going on across the state in some towns, where it's not, people are anticipating it could, could come. So, I want to again commend the board for having the conversation, for opening up the floor a little bit to learn about this, to think about this, and to be as informed as possible in order to make decisions going forward, so.
Great, thank you. Jen?
Just a quick question, so on the 24th, so that's the next, that's the two meetings, right?
Yes.
So, at that meeting, as a board, we will be discussing, like, are we, we're not making a final decision, correct? I mean, this is like a discussion, we're all giving like our view and how we're moving forward, and?
So, at that meeting, I'll have the survey results and anything else that I can, I will formally share with the board, with the community, with others, along with any other information, timing, whatever else could be. And then look for the board to give us some direction around preferred scenario or scenarios, based on what we know and what we have, so that we can then take that information and actualize it over the summer in conversations and other, and other work, so that when we come back in the fall, we can say, we've taken this, knowing what we know, we've taken this preferred scenario, or these, and here's what we've learned, here's where we are, this is what it would take to implement. These are some harder numbers around costs, around time. It would give us the opportunity to work with the wraparound service providers, both before and after school, would give us opportunities to look at other possible ways to alleviate congestion and traffic, based on timing. So, it gives us that time over the summer to do that type of work, and then share it with the board early in the fall, in time for consideration, when the budget is built going forward.
I think also, it's, in my view, it's one, one option, it's not multiple, because then I think it's hard for, it's hard for the broader community, for parents, to really sort of react as to, you know, whether it makes sense or is workable for their family. I also think it's important, we're engaging with after-school programs and folks like that, to really have, you know, one, one possible option to look at.
Okay.
helpful?
Yes, thank you.
I just had one question, which was relative to the start times that we looked at, what was it, two weeks ago, or maybe it was four weeks ago now? There were some tweaks to the timing, you know, what was, what was shared in the survey, so can you just provide a little bit of color on that, as to whether you thought that, you know, those were things that are achievable, based on what we know today, or whether they're still likely to be tweaked, those sorts of things?
Right. So, we, after the board's conversation here, we looked at a couple of scenarios to see, can we eke out confidently, kind of predict being able to eke out an extra five minutes here or there? The timing of, in those charts that came forward, is our, sort of our best guess, knowing what we know today, right? What we, in the summer, we'd be able to actually reroute the actual students that we have, so that we'd be able to know more precisely what the timing might look like. So, but one of the pieces of feedback was to try to move the 7:40 start time for the three elementaries, in that scenario where they start first, as late as possible, and that's where we looked at, where we could pretty confidently move it out to 7:45, although again, we don't really know for sure until we build the routes and do the work we have to do over the summer. We also looked at the scenario that has, nobody starting before 8 o'clock, to look to see, can we move the last tier back, you know, about five minutes or so, just, again, we don't want to put something out there that we don't, we can't reasonably support, but until we actually build the runs, and you know, when the letters go out to families about bus pickup time in the morning, they're pretty accurate. Like, when we build those runs, using the software we have, they do an excellent job, sort of being able to give the time of the pickup, and yeah, by the minute, we're pretty good at it, unless there's, you know, a delay somewhere in the roads that happen on Friday. So, the, that will be running the software through the simulation that is, that the board gives us as guidance, so that we can get that precise. And then we'd be able to answer questions such as, you know, in this, in any given scenario, what's the earliest bus pickup time for any student? What's the longest duration that child would be on, or any child would be on a bus? What's the latest arrival time home at the end of the day? We can, we're looking forward to getting that granular in the conversation, so that the board has that full set of data to make that, you know, the informed decision going forward. So, the, we did the best we could, we listened to the conversation with the board and thought that, you know, and discussed it a bit, you know, always, of course, remembering that the times in the morning are truly driven by the time it takes in the afternoon to load the buses, get the students home, and get those buses to the next school. One of the superintendents I was talking to last week, they, his district tried to make a slight adjustment at the high school without adjusting the other start times, start and end times, and it has not worked well, you know, because they thought they could squeeze out a little time, they couldn't squeeze out the time, and so, you know, they're looking at different options now, so. Constantly running late for many, many kids. So, that's where, you know, it's those times at the end of the day, it's easy in the morning, because you just drop any time and keep going, but at the end of the day, the buses have to be onsite to load the kids, get them home, and get to that next place. So, that's what we're looking at. So, we look at the afternoon in order to make adjustments in the morning.
Great. Any other questions? All right, thanks.
Brendan?
Yes?
Will the board see the data from the survey before the 24th?
Well, I'm hoping that to have it a little bit before that. You know, the, the weekend cost us a couple of days in their analysis, but they thought that that was worth it. So, hopefully, the week before, we should be able to at least have something in hand that we could share with the board prior to the conversation, yes. I think that would be a good thing to do.
And one more question, I know they're talking about a second exit here at the high school, is that factored in? Is that?
So, what we're talking about, and I've talked, spoken with the first elect about this a little bit, would be a road through Waviney, that would be gated off here at the high school side, and it would help for some overflow and maybe some other parking. It could be helpful, you know, in the morning, that could be helpful, and in the afternoon could be helpful. Of course, it is still, it's directing traffic through the roads of Waviney, so some work has to be done around what, sort of what capacity that would be, and there may have to be a traffic study, because of the fact that Waviney goes out to state roads, so I, we just have to look into that a bit. But it's something that Kevin and I have spoken about, we're both in favor of it, if we can, we can do something like that, because it could be, just, even just as a pressure release valve a little bit. You know, we, there's conversations around security, certainly, so how would we be able to secure an entrance on the, in the back? Would we have to man it like we do in the front? Would we, could we do something else with it? So, there, you know, we're trying to make sure we identify any potential needs or costs prior to, you know, taking that step, but we'll be speaking with the board about that as more unfolds. But I've told Kevin, certainly, we, I think it's something worth exploring, and we'd be in favor of if we can make it all work.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Next is the learning management system update with Mr. Salvestrini.
Good evening, everyone. Nice to see you all, thank you for giving me the opportunity to come back in front of you and give you an update on where we are with our learning management system pilot. You may remember, last time I was in front of you was in February, where we were just kicking off a three-month pilot of School-Agee, so I'm here to tell you how far we've come with that. So, where are we now? Since we last met, we have completed, as I said, a three-month trial of School-Agee, and we had a very good, strong cross-section of teachers that took part in the pilot from grades four through 12. During that time, we provided teachers with ongoing support, both with, through professional learning, direct professional learning, bringing in experts from School-Agee to provide them with training, and then ongoing one-on-one work with technology integrators, as teachers tried to put the system through its paces and use it for a variety of instructional needs. We've also gathered feedback from teachers, from administrators, from curriculum leaders who've been looking at that system, at the end of the three-month period, wanted to really get a sense of what they thought of it all. And those teams continue to use the School-Agee's platform now, and they want to continue to use it all the way through the remainder of the year, because they found some really strong instructional benefits, and they didn't want us to take it away from them, so. I should probably advance this as I talk, but it's just technology, right? So, who piloted the program? So, you can see here, the cross-section that I was talking about, I'd like to take a moment to thank these teachers for their participation, their leadership, their willing, willingness to step outside of their comfort zone and try something new. This is, these are the kind of people that we need to try to move our district forward. They were honest, they were thoughtful in their feedback, they had both commendations and recommendations, and which really helped me in trying to think about what our next steps are, so I want to publicly thank all of them for their hard work. At the end of April, I asked, we brought the groups back together, I started with the high school, and I had some basic questions for them. What would you feel like were the strengths of the system? What do you think were some areas of consideration that we needed to have in place? And at the end of the day, what would be your recommendation to, to us? Is this something worth pursuing, or something that we should not pursue? Pretty straightforward. These are the strengths that they identified. And at the very beginning, the management aspect of the learning management system came through really clearly. Teachers felt that School-Agee offered a really strong structure, so students knew where to go to get the information they needed, okay? They appreciated and saw value in the organization of all, not just some related course materials, but all the course resources, assignments, quizzes, linked videos, homework assignments, et cetera, was very helpful, okay? There, so one of the tools that they found very useful was utilization of rubrics, integrating those rubrics into tasks and assignments that they give students. Now, using rubrics is not new for us, but the way that it was used and integrated into the system allowed students to have that rubric connected with an assignment, get the feedback that the teacher provided them through the rubric, and then go back to that assignment in real time, make adjustments, and resubmit, okay? So, if we were trying to encourage that reflective process, those rubrics and that tool was really very helpful. They also commented that School-Agee offered many features that Google Classroom just doesn't offer, okay? And they listed those, everything from third-party apps, which can be integrated, which, for example, can lock down the browser, so students can't, are in a secure assessment platform, to the opportunity to integrate into Power School, which is a really rich and robust tool as well, which they're just learning on how to really capitalize on. When we moved into considerations, they really focused on how to support people, how to support their colleagues, if we were to proceed with this, okay? And some of their key recommendations were to continue to develop departmental experts. If you remember, if the slide, the first slide or two I showed you, we had a great cross-section of teachers from all the departments in the high school. So, how do we continue to build our, our building-based, our department-based experts? So, they can be both training leaders and sort of needs-based resources when, for their colleagues, as they're trying to learn and apply School-Agee, and build out their coursework. They felt like the need of first steering committee, a team of teachers who would help guide the process if we were to move forward, gather feedback from peers, make decisions about what type of professional learning their colleagues might need, and how we can best capitalize on this resource moving forward. They commented that School-Agee offers a tremendous amount, it's so multi-layered, it has a tremendous amount of resources, and it's, you know, even in three months, they were just touching the surface. So, we, they, we had spent a lot of time talking about, how do we prioritize, what do teachers know? What is sort of a level one skill set, a level two skill set, a level three skill set? And we felt, they felt it was important to really start to establish these specific expectations for teachers, so teachers knew what they would be working towards, and as colleagues who would be helping them along the process, they knew, hey, I'm strong in this area and I can help out, or hey, this is an area where I need to make sure that I get some support from somebody else, so I can help them along the way. And we're already in the process of doing that. Developing a dynamic professional learning resource, combining both in-person, real-time workshops, but also designing asymmetrical professional learning experiences, where teachers can go in, take self-paced learning, get badged, so they can earn specific badges for specific skills and understandings along the way. And, and we really want to use, actually leverage School-Agee, if we were to proceed, to actually provide that, those professional resources for teachers, okay? And then lastly, but most importantly, they really felt like it was essential to, if we were to proceed, to proceed gradually, and have a plan where we provide teachers the time to build their understanding, apply their learning, and build the kind of resources, the courses that are really gonna last, and be worth, worth their effort. So, it just so happened, at the end of April, I also sat down with a group of freshmen, because I wanted to get their feedback on what it was like to transition from eighth grade into ninth grade. My lens was really specifically with them, tell me about, did you feel like you were prepared, from a technology standpoint, for the expectations that teachers would put, asked of you in ninth grade? A very thoughtful, eloquent group of boys and girls, or young ladies and young men, but one of the things they did say, they did feel prepared in many, many ways. One of the things that they felt like there was a learning curve, a learning curve for them, and how to stay organized with all of the digital resources that teachers were providing them, okay? And along those lines, that they felt that it was confusing, where one teacher preferred Google Classroom, and another teacher would use Moodle, another teacher might not use either of those, and then they might be in another classroom where the teacher is piloting School-Agee. So, they felt like it was confusing to keep track of all of those different platforms, and they said, can you please help us, because we want to do, we want to do well, but if we can make it easier for us to keep ourselves organized? And they said they liked having the resources that are needed for learning organized digitally, because they want to be able to go back to them on their own time, and look at them, and use them as a resource. The digital format allows for immediate feedback very often, or quicker feedback than would in more traditional ways. As I said before, with rubrics, the opportunity to go back and revise their work. And also, they said the rubrics were very helpful. So, I shared this feedback with the high school team, and it really helped them see it from the student perspective, and to see that students were asking for clarity. So, at the end of it all, this is what the high school team said to me. Unequivocally, there was not one person in the room that felt like we should not proceed with the, with utilizing School-Agee as a learning platform, okay, a learning management system. And they also suggested a gradual rollout, starting in the fall of 2019, I'll go into a little bit more detail on that, maybe a little bit. There was not one person that said we should not proceed, okay? Which was, I felt was really a powerful statement. So, you see here, these were the steps, we spent a little bit of time after they shared with that, these are the steps that they recommended that we follow as we look at a rollout plan, okay? Between now and June, raising teachers' awareness of what is School-Agee. Now, we had, do had, we do have a good cross-section of teachers that piloted it, however, we have a very large staff here at the high school, and many teachers weren't even, you need to learn, what is School-Agee? So, we're gonna be offering an overview, what is School-Agee, choice drop-in sessions to give a 20-minute overview of what School-Agee is between now and the end of the school year. One of our other priorities is to make sure our teacher trainers, our teacher experts have an additional opportunity to learn some more in areas where they felt like they wanted to, to become more expert. I gathered that feedback from them, they told me what they really wanted to learn, so how do we, we need to provide them with some additional professional learning in that area, before we head off into the summer. Over the summer, we're hoping to offer some elective, some choice opportunities for teachers to come in and get trained in School-Agee. Again, basic learning, not required, but if there are teachers that are out there that wanna, to wanna learn, and wanna get a jumpstart, then we want to be able to provide them that opportunity, and we're looking into how we can do that for them. Along, just along the way, I had a conversation with a teacher in world languages, Matt, just this morning, Matt, is there a way where I can start to get that overview on my own? I'm a self-paced learner, I'd like to go on and find a digital resource which I can, I can look into. And so, I will direct her to those sets of resources that we're building out within School-Agee, so she can, she can do it on her own, okay? As we look into December, that steering committee has already started to identify a core set of skills, which we want to make, teach the staff about, and make sure that they're secure in. And they will be level one, how do you create your profile? How do you integrate your calendar? How do you start to put resources into School-Agee and organize them, okay? So, in the fall, we're gonna be utilizing professional learning opportunities, both building-based and ones with, through the district, where we can provide that training, starting whole group, but then off, differentiating through departments, to make sure that we provide the training for teachers, because not every person is at the same level of understanding with School-Agee. At that time, in the fall, we'll share our notification to parents and families about where we're going with School-Agee, with the goal in January, to have teacher feel, all teachers feel comfortable and competent enough to build out one course, and deliver that one course completely within the School-Agee ecosystem. As we move into the summer, providing additional training for anybody that felt like that wasn't near As we move into the summer, providing additional training for anybody that felt like that wasn't there, that they were secure. And then looking in the fall of 2020 to have all high school teachers utilizing Schoology to deliver instruction, and we have a consistent learning management system across the district. Throughout this process, I'll be relying on the, we will be relying on the feedback and the guidance of that steering committee, but also making sure that we are very purposeful about gathering feedback from teachers and students to make sure that we're hearing, how it's going for them as well. Now, I don't want to neglect, to neglect our elementary and middle school folks because in many ways, they were very, they were equally enthusiastic about the opportunity. And with them, they really echoed a lot of, some of what they, they shared regarding strengths were similar to what we heard from the high school folks. Some of the elementary students said that it was, using Schoology was easier than Google Classroom. Some middle school students said that it wasn't quite as flashy, that it was a little, looked a little dated. But, you know, it's a personality, I guess, you know, everybody likes different things. However, they did, students did like the ability to return to resources, okay? They liked that the information was organized in a logical manner within folders that they knew, you could see the learning sequence of a course. So they could go back and they could see the assignments over time. The structure was very clear, very logical, very helpful for students. Again, rubrics seem to be a big theme, and the ability to, not just to have a, there is a reference, as a passive reference, but an active guide in helping you reflect, them reflect about their work. Okay, differentiation of instruction was a very strong piece of feedback I had heard, that within Schoology, you can differentiate and personalize instruction for either individuals or small, small groups of students to a much greater degree than you can in other platforms, especially Google Classroom. And if we look at what we're trying to do and how we're trying to structure our learning, that's a very powerful piece of feedback in my mind. And then the ability to communicate students to teachers privately, okay? Where a student can send a message to their teacher, perhaps asking for help, saying that they're not sure about some work, or having a private dialogue with a teacher. Well, it's a really nice, safe, secure opportunity for students to keep, to maintain a connection with their teachers as well. Their considerations that they said to me, again, aligned very much with what the high school folks had shared with me. Roll it out thoughtfully, all right? Have a plan where it's tiered, all right, not all at once. Be consistent with your expectations, what we want teachers to do. And this really aligns with the feedback that we had heard when we reached out to other peer districts that are using it now. Greenwich and Westport said it's all about the implementation, okay? If you rush it, you run the risk of scatter, okay? And I think one of the things that, the pieces of feedback that is reflected in this presentation here is a consistent message by both students and teachers that, that consistency, that one, I like to call it an ecosystem, where we can, where they can live in and learn in is what they're looking for, okay? And this is what the elementary and middle school folks said. They all agreed that it was worth pursuing in the future. One teacher said, don't take my Schoology away from me, that's what she said. She loved it so much. So let me tell you about where, what our next steps are. We're still in progress, process. We are working very hard to make sure we're planful about preparing teachers before they leave at the end of the year, to give them ideas, especially at the high school, of where we are going, okay? To get those people while they're here now, to work together, to try to put together some professional resources before the, they head off to the summer. We have secured, just to remind you all, we secured funding for approximately 1,400 students for the 1920 school year. The feedback that we had, I just shared with you, really directs us to focus on the high school, okay? We have, it seems to be an area where they just, the teachers really responded to the opportunity. And not only that, I also think we have the greatest cross-section of staff which we can leverage to really make this a successful rollout, all right? The great thing about Schoology is that we pay for the student seats, but the teacher, teachers can participate for free. So there is opportunity for us to look at, so how do we get other teachers into that space while we continue the rollout at the high school? So that's a conversation we're still having because we want to make sure we want, we don't spread ourselves too thin, because we want to be successful in the rollout. And, and again, the next steps is to continue to ensure that we have the resources for teachers lined up, readily available, and not just the in-person training, the workshops, but also providing a variety of online resources for teachers to afford. So, that's my-
Thank you.
That's my quick update, happy to take any questions you have.
This is great. I mean, I view this as just one of the big things that we're doing to help reduce the level of stress because I think the more kids have, you know, one place that they can go for their homework and quizzes and tests, and their parents can, you know, go when it's, you know, workable for them or appropriate for them to do so. I think it's hugely helpful, so, thank you. Questions? Tom?
You talked about teachers building out a single course sometime as early as this fall.
I would, I would say that we're, if there's a teacher that wants to take the initiative to do it on their own in the fall, that's fine, our, the, our, our plan was to try to have it set for January.
January.
To make sure that they have, they understand all the different aspects that will go into putting that course together.
I think it'd be really interesting to have a teacher or two to come in and demonstrate how that works digitally on, on our screens. You know, just a little summary of how they interface with Schoology and how one of their students would do the same.
Okay, yeah, sure we could do that. Perry?
I think this is a tremendous initiative. I have two questions, one, I was wondering how much of you think it would cost the district? And were there any cost offsets, you know, savings that we'll have by, when we finally get all to Schoology? And then second, is there any way to get more middle school teachers to train that are interested to train next year? It sounds like you have your hands full with the high school, but maybe really interest, we could start developing some teachers at the middle school level that would be, that would help us implement it more quickly the following year there.
The feedback team offered some ideas there. I think it really comes down to a couple of things. One, what's the, if we're going to do that, we have to have seats for students, okay? Which is an additional cost, okay? So that's something we would have to consider. But I think we're, we're trying to also be creative. Teachers can use Schoology on their own, they can use that as a professional resource, as a professional touchbase for themselves. I think there's a future conversation we can have about how we provide the opportunity for elementary and middle school teachers to get into Schoology at a lower level of expectation than perhaps at the high, we're thinking of the high school right now. To go back to your first question, the expectation would be that we would no longer be having to maintain Moodle, okay, which is currently being used at the high school, all right? So we would look at having one more year of using Moodle, which would be this, this year coming up, and then after that, we would no longer have to pay for that.
And just to add, just a little bit on that, the, we've got the two TI model over at Saks, so we have two technology integrators at Saks, and they'll certainly be a part and learning and invited to training at the high school, what have you, so that, because they'll be the folks on the ground helping the implementation at Saks when the time comes. So we'll be developing their knowledge and expertise as well.
Absolutely, yeah.
And Moodle, where it was free years ago, we, as most districts have, the management of it is so complex that we pay someone else to host it, and we have for years. So when we, because I know it was originally a free resource that we were using, but as more and more courses were built out into it, it became prohibitive to try to manage it internally. So we've been paying that for a number of years.
And one of the things I just want to add in, what we're working on is with Curriculum Leadership Council. So we are having conversations with them of how they can get resources onto Schoology, which will actually open it up for K through 12 staff. So that's a different way of training them without having the student seats, so that they're going to one place to find resources for their units of study, to actually find their units of study. Because right now, even the staff goes to different places to find the resources depending on where they've been put for that department. And so, as much as you try to move them over to one platform, they tend to go back to the platform that they're most comfortable with. Schoology will allow us to put all of those resources into one platform for them.
Sure, that's, that's right. It helps them to live in the space, right, so they at least get used to the interface. But this is a case where we want to go slowly in the beginning in order to go fast, you know? And if we, where it hasn't worked well in some districts around us and others that we've talked to is when they've gone too quickly, too fast, too quickly. Is that right? Yeah, and, you know, we don't want to make that, we want to learn from them and not make that mistake. So we're, we'll build into it, I think, in the right ways, scaffold learning and scale it up.
Thank you very much.
Yep, Deanna?
Oh, yeah, you're not done yet. No, I just, thank you, I'm very excited about this opportunity as well. And just a couple of questions. You mentioned the opportunity to differentiate instruction within the platform. Could you just talk a little bit about how teachers would be able to differentiate with their students within the platform?
Teachers can actually create groups of students within a class and then assign different assignments or tasks to them based on the groupings of the students, that can be, you know, an individual or it can be a smaller, a group of two or three or whatever. So they can create groups and then push out to them different assignments and different tests or quizzes or whatever it may be.
And then, with the, I know we haven't really interfaced with parents on this yet, but beyond sort of, you know, the Power School interface and, and I guess now we'll be able to, the parents will be able to, one source for all the homework to be able to sort of see what their kids are doing or need to be doing. Is there any other parent interface within Schoology that, you know, they'll have? Or is that about it? Is it basically those two?
I would imagine, there's, we have to think a little bit about how we're going to make sure we communicate out to parents exactly how they can, what Schoology is and how they're going to use that to-
It's a look over the shoulder.
Yeah, have some insights as to what they're-
Have the interface.
And I do want to just add in one, what's most interesting is when you go into districts that are really using Schoology and you go into their website, they have links that bring you right over to, how do you access Power School and, or Aspen, whatever their grading system may be, where they're keeping all of those grades. And then there's a whole nother link for Schoology, and it brings them out to a variety of different places. And there's a place for where would students go, where would staff go, where would parents go? And so there's a lot of videos and other things that are available as we move into the platform.
And then just the final question, and I guess I'm gonna, I appreciate the go slow to, but I just wanted-
But-
You were gonna go there, I was gonna go there.
I appreciate it. I, you know, and I'm thrilled you're gonna have the high school for fall 2020. I think that's phenomenal. So I just wanted to get sort of your goal for the middle school rollout, because I think that would be probably the second most important.
Absolutely right. I, I think, I'm not trying to dodge the answer here. I think we want to, I would like to learn from the rollout at the high school and do that really well. That's going to guide us as to how we want, how we can prepare and roll it out for the middle school, okay? I think to Dr. Krenti's comment of making sure that if we can use this year coming up to start to align instructional resources in here, in there, that's going to help drive teachers to that area as well. So, so I think there are things that we can do now to help set it up for success and set it up for that next stage of pushing it out for them. I, I think, I, I can't give you a definite answer for that because I think we have to also listen to the needs of the teachers and make sure that we're really responsive. Because once again, what came through loud and clear is, we want to make sure that they are fully invested, they feel very competent and confident to use the tool. That's what's going to make the difference in the long run, okay?
I also just want to add in, from a student's lens, they start using Google Classroom in third grade, and then they move into the middle school using Google Classroom, and they're only living in one platform. So from the student lens, they're only living in Google Classroom. And actually, when we rolled out Schoology with some of the grade-eight students, the big question was, why are we doing this? Like, we like, we like Google Classroom, Google Classroom's so much easier to use. But then when you hit ninth grade, you hear loud and clear from the kids, this is way too many platforms, you've got us in Moodle, you've got us in Google Classroom, some don't use a platform, some post over here, so, some post on the website. So that's where some of the confusion hits, which made most logical sense from that student lens to start with high school students, and then work our way back. But I mean, the idea would be that you start maybe in grade three with that Schoology and you roll it out, you know, so that the kids are, you look at that cohort of kids that are following up with it too, different ways of thinking about the rollout.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. And then I just would like to echo Tom's request. I think it's a phenomenal idea to, you know, get a demonstration.
Yeah. Maria?
Is it, will it eliminate the need for Google down, is it a single sign-on? Will students be signing into one platform and everything else, like turn it in?
Turn it in can be integrated into that as well, yes.
So they'll only be going on that one platform? And then you mentioned it can lock down the computer for testing.
It can, yeah.
Since they're, at the high school at least, they're family-owned computers, does that require some setup at the beginning of the year with-
They don't need to download anything onto their computer, if that's the question, right? So within, so, once they're in Schoology, it, they, it locks them within, when they're in the interface in Schoology, okay? They don't need to download something onto the computer, if that's your question. Which I think is a, is a big question people have.
The other question I have, I mean, I think this is really neat. It's a great way to get instruction in a different way, meet a lot of student needs. But my own phone gives me little notices that tells me how much screen time I've been on this. So I'm worried about the amount of screen time, especially in the middle school, parents are fighting with their children to get off the device. So, how are you tracking the amount of time? You know, if the students are moving class to class and they're getting screen time assignments in every class, are we tracking that? And can you bring parents in earlier before you start actually implementing it? So you know what the concerns are. And one mother mentioned it gives her son a migraine. You know, so how do you balance that, the screen time with the-
Well, I, I think that's, that's always something we're concerned about, is the balance, okay? And we certainly don't want students to be on the, on technology all the time, okay? We do have conversations with teachers about how they're utilizing technology. I think that if, if we're looking at, as we start to have a rollout at the middle school and look into that further, that'll certainly be a conversation. A big piece of the conversation that, with feedback was, again, how do we help students manage their time, okay? Their work, all right, and, and that would certainly be a part of it, right? So it's, how do I manage all the resources I have to, that I'm responsible for? And then how much time am I, am I spending on it? You know, it was interesting, going back to my conversation with the freshmen at the high school, they, they, I had asked them about, how much time do you spend on coursework? And then how much time do you spend, you know, it's your own device, you can go into the library and you can play games on there, or whatever it may be. And they were pretty clear that they spend very little time on those outside, non-instructional-related tasks because they really want to be focused on their work, okay? So, so I, I think it's something to keep in mind as we continue to move forward.
And I would say, I, in my experience, it is the schoolwork that keeps them, for the most part, on the device after hours. But one thing that has come up too, and this is an instructional thing, is when you have assignments that are due at midnight. I know personally, I've had a problem with that, with, with kids, so if that's a practice, you can look into.
You bring up a great point. One of those conversations, one of the things that, again, this is, we learn from our peers, right? So one of the things that we had heard, learned from when we were having a conversation with Westport is setting up those parameters. So, that steering committee, part of the job would be, so what's the expectation? When do teachers have to post those assignments by? What are, what can we agree upon, okay? And what does it mean to say, if you're going to post by four o'clock, all right? So, absolutely right, we don't want to have that for students. So, but, so, but I also want to engage the staff in coming up with those norms. And that's, we're very cognizant of that in our reflective conversation in April, and I think that's a great thing, an important thing for us to keep in mind as we plan forward. That's the purpose of that steering committee too.
Yeah, and just to echo, Billy and I have been speaking about that specific practice, among other things, as, you know, get back to the student health and wellness focus, and what can we do as a faculty in a school district to identify where some of those pressure points are and let some of the pressure out? So that, that midnight deadline is one of those areas. I know the faculty is discussing. Bill is in faculty meetings and with his department chairs and other folks, they're having that conversation. And I anticipate we'll, we'll see some things changed in the future. And I anticipate we'll, we'll see some things changed in the future.
There's also a feature that allows with the calendar, which allows staff to see the different assignments that are getting posted, which I think also helps the staff. They were very, the pilot group at the high school was very excited about that feature, which would allow them to say, wow, if you're looking at it from a whole different perspective, look at what social studies has coming due and look at what science has coming due and is there a way for us to better pace that out so that kids don't have multiple things coming due or long-term projects all coming due at the same time? So there is that feature that they've been exploring with the calendar on Schoology, which allows people to see everything, which is, you know, something that I think would be helpful to our students.
That's great.
I just had one.
Yeah?
Does school, this is in reference to teachers taking continuing education courses, does Schoolology or any vendor offer courses through Schoolology that teachers can use to take PD courses that would result maybe even in a savings?
We haven't looked into that yet. I don't know what other third-party add-ons you could look into. I know we can create resources, which we put in there for teachers to, to access. I haven't looked at that part, that's worth looking into.
Like, I know you can take courses through, you know, Columbia and they run on Blackboard. I'm just curious if there's other, might be worth putting out catalogs.
Honestly, it wasn't something in the pilot that we were really focused on. So something worth keeping in mind, yeah.
Great. Other questions? I've got just a couple. One, do we have any limitations on our educational media in terms of sharing them through Schoology or online? Or are they generally able to be shared in that way?
You mean, you mean student work or you mean?
No, I mean, I mean, you know, for copyright reasons, textbooks, you know, online textbooks, those sorts of things. Are they generally able to be shared?
No, we, we have specific licenses for a number of textbooks, so it's, it's.
So you can share the banana media.
Yeah, it's an e-textbook and that's, it's assigned to that individual.
Yeah. Great. And then with any of the, the teachers doing the pilots, did they find that there were, you know, efficiency or time-related savings once they were in Schoology or are they not really at that point yet? Because I would imagine with some of them, once they sort of get in the flow, that they will, they will find it saves them a lot of time in addition to the students.
Yes, I think, one of the things I heard loud and clear was a teacher said, I, I can create this assignment, a template of this assignment, and I can then tailor that very quickly and distribute that out to those three different groups of students by making minor changes to that template, right? So you can create almost a, you could even create a whole course that has, is basically a framework, and then you can take that course and adjust it, make slight changes to either the content or the assessment or whatever it may be, and use those for different, for different courses. So a curriculum coordinator or department chair could say, this is going to be my freshman English course, and then share that out with those teachers of freshman English, and they can then personalize it, okay?
Right.
So there are efficiencies in that way, yeah.
I think one of the biggest efficiencies is going to be with the interface with Power School. So currently, Moodle and Google don't allow that interface at all. And so the teachers literally have to log out of that management system to go into their grade book to do all the data entry and to post those grades, where this is going to streamline it. So they're still exploring that and learning that because that wasn't a feature that we really opened up for the pilot, they just weren't ready to do that. And that would be something as they move forward in 2020 that they'd be able to do, and it would just be the streamline of what gets posted into the grade book, and so it'll be easier for them in that regard.
And that was a big selling point of, of Schoology, that was why it was.
And have we, have we accessed that as a district in terms of, you know, tried it out and?
Yeah, they have been, yes. They've been trying it out. And it depended on the level of comfort for the teacher.
So we have Rick Ra, who's our data manager at central office, who really oversees Power School and really helps to work behind the scenes and do a lot of that coding. So he's really been the person who's been in contact with Schoology and trying to work through all of that. Because I would imagine he's going to be the person who's going to go out and help do some of that training with the staff to help make that streamlined and, and very seamless for them.
Okay, great. Thank you. Any other questions?
Great.
Thanks a lot.
Appreciate it.
Okay, next is the statement of accounts with Dr. Keating.
Good evening. You have before you tonight the statement of accounts as of April 30th. We are 80% through the budget year right now and the fiscal year of our $89.8 million budget, 75% of it has been expended, 22% is encumbered, and there's a balance of 3% that has not been either encumbered or expended. And as we've talked about that before, it's for variable accounts, payroll taxes and the like. One of the things we've been talking about since the fall is the projected over expenditure intuition out of district. And we currently have that forecasted based on information through the 17th of May to come in $617,000 over the original budget. So that's a significant bump even from the time we did our budget forecast. We will look to offset a portion of that based on any kind of balances we have in other accounts within our budget. But right now, it's too early to say what those numbers are going to be. Just today, we had a surprise on one of the chillers here at the high school after our meeting this morning, where we had a failure and it was $24,300. So it's really kind of too early to make a commitment to the town as to how much money we're going to have left to offset this $617,000. But we certainly will look to get that number down as best we can. And one other update, we are moving forward on the solar project. We opened up six bids, we have three low bidders that we've interviewed, and we're looking to make a decision in the next week or so. And we're going to bring that contract to the full board for your review and consideration because it's a long-term contract that we would be getting into. But the pricing is very aggressive, it's good, it's about 75% less than what we're currently paying, so we're very excited about that.
That's great. So 75%, is that, do you know what roughly the savings would be?
Right, so we're currently paying about 16, a little over 16 cents a kilowatt, and the pricing came in around four, four and a half in that neighborhood right there.
Does that build in the financing costs for the install?
Yeah, everything, that's a PPA.
Okay.
And it's interesting, the pricing structure on solar, it's not terribly expensive when you really break everything down with the Z-Rex and the cost over 20 years. So as we move forward to east and sacks and west, we should look at possibly procuring it rather than doing a PPA. But we're going to do an analysis of that as we go forward.
And the PPAs for 20 years?
Yeah, it's a 20-year. The Z-Rex are 15, so they blend it over the 20-year contract.
Okay.
We do have an option with a few of them to go 25 for a better price, more aggressive price.
Right.
So we'll weigh that as well.
And we still don't know the total size of the project because of the roof, or do we know?
No, we know. It's going to be a little bit over 400 kilowatt. So it's a good sized system, it's going to take care of about 80% of the building's use. And then we have net metering, so we can push it back in and out of the grid because we'll get most of the power during the summer in the nice months, and then we'll be able to utilize it in the winter.
Any questions? Penny?
Just a question on the net metering, metering and how that works financially. Do we actually get to sell that back or is it just a credit that we have that we can use, or how does that work?
It's credited, it's metered and credited back into the grid, and then it's metered when it comes back to us.
Okay, so you then have the credit that you don't have to pay.
So it's net metering, yes, yeah. So we'll probably push out more than we're going to actually need, or less than we're actually going to need, so we'll probably be purchasing about 20% of what we need.
It's exciting, thank you. I'm really thrilled about this development.
All right. Any other questions? Great, thank you. Next is the action items, the 2019-2020 district calendar.
Yes, so this is our calendar for next year, and we were reviewing it and we recognized that when we built this calendar, the regional calendar conversations were still occurring. And with the regional calendar conversations, the state was asking all school districts to begin on the Wednesday before Labor Day. So we looked at this calendar and realized that it still has us beginning in the Wednesday before Labor Day, which, if you, so that would be August 28th. Then if you look into June at the end of the year, you see the green box around June 17th, which signifies a professional learning day for staff. So in order to conform to the regional calendar and the Wednesday start, and given the way that this calendar breaks out with the Friday prior to April break is Good Friday and the other days as they are, the only other place to put that professional learning day was the last day of school. So what I'd like to discuss with the board, it would be the possibility of making an adjustment to this calendar so that our first day of school would actually be a day later, on Thursday, August 29th. Then our last day of school would be that June 17th day, which is the green box, and that would be the half-day for everybody. It's, our regular practice has been to have the three days prior to the start of the school year, because it really does get us into a good rhythm around professional learning. Our first day, as you know, is convocation and meet and greet at the elementaries and the other district, other buildings. And then we'll have typically a building professional learning day around building initiatives, then a district professional learning day around district-wide initiatives. And it really does work well to have those three days as a lead-in to the start of the school year. I also don't think any students mind waiting having one extra day of summer prior to beginning in August. And the, at the end of the school year, to have a professional learning day at after school is out is really not a great use of time. At that point, graduations have come and gone, all the end-of-the-year celebrations have come and gone, and it's, can be a little tricky to re-engage. We can do it if we have to, but it's, it's not the best day for professional learning. So what I'd like to propose is making that adjustment in the calendar. The, the challenge, so you know, is that, as you know, the Board of Education has a policy that encourages us to end no later than the Friday of the third full week of school in June. And so that gives us, making this change gives us two snow days or other cancellations to hit the 182. In the past, if we've gone over 182, or we've had more than the two in that scenario, we've reduced the student day down to 181 or 180. That would give us four cancellation days if needed. And then if we went beyond that and say we had a fifth day or beyond, typically we would take it out of April. Given that the Easter weekend starts the April break, I think that, you know, we've talked a little bit about where would the days come from in April, and at this point, you know, our thinking would be that it would start on the Friday, the 17th, and work backwards. So then people could travel for the holiday weekend if they so choose, if we had to capture extra days. The other thing that happens is if we do have to reduce the student year to 180 days, as you know, the staff do 187 days. So they would come in the fourth week in June, and there's no Board of Ed policy that speaks to the staff days. So that's perfectly fine. The last piece is if something catastrophic were to happen, we've had, you know, Hurricane Sandy, other things that have happened, the state does require us to go right up through the very last possible day in June regardless of Board of Education policy. So we do all we can to work within that policy and to make all of that work, but if something catastrophic happened, we would be able to go, we'd have to go right up through June 30th, as happened to some, some school districts up north with a macroburst and other things. But that's the, the thinking and the proposal around just the, a small change in the calendar. I think that'll yield some important returns for our staff as we think about preparing for the new year and transitioning into it in August. And Bea?
Makes sense to me. I mean, I think the biggest question would be in August, but since we're moving a day back, I imagine if people had made plans, they'll be, they're all, they'll already be here, you know, at least for, for that Wednesday, the 28th, so. It's good from my perspective. Any other questions or comments? Maria?
It kind of leaves a long time with no PD after February. I mean, is, is it not some?
It's, in part, that's due to the, again, the Good Friday in April. Typically, we try to put a PD day before the week of the April break. But we do regularly have, we have professional learning hours that we use, so it's about an hour a month, you know, we use those 10 hours throughout the course of the year. We have department meetings and other opportunities for folks too. That's really, you know, real-time learning with their departments or in their grade levels or in other things like that. So we do integrate it in throughout the course of the year.
Any other comments, questions? Okay, so can I have a motion to revise the 2019-2020 calendar as per Dr. Lettsi's recommendation? Kiana? Second? Katrina? All those in favor? Thanks.
Summer's a day longer. Doesn't hurt with the south roof either.
Don't make your April break plans early.
As Dr. Keating mentioned, the south roof and the work that's going on there, roof projects in the summer are tricky because they're so weather-dependent, so.
Let's pray for not too much rain. We don't want drought, but we don't want too much rain.
Well, this summer, we could.
We've gotten a lot, actually.
After all the rain we've gotten, yeah. But, yeah, keep an eye on it. So thank you.
Okay. Next, comments from the public? Yes?
Hi, I'm Ann Wagner, and I live at 94 Elm Place. I felt compelled to come tonight just to speak about the later start times. I know that the surveys are coming in, and I'm happy to hear that you've had some strong participation in that. I wanted to share with you just my personal experience raising teenagers. I will not get into the day-to-day, but however, so I'm a parent of a ninth, seventh, and third grader. My ninth grader starts school before my third grader, and they have opposite rhythms. My eight-year-old is up and ready and cheerful by 7:30 a.m. My ninth grader is up and ready and in a very somber, sleepy state at 7:00 a.m. And when she has a sleep-in, she is noticeably happier and more alert. These sleep-ins are a treasured morning. I also find her efficiency with her homework after school is quite heightened. And honestly, as a parent, she's much more pleasant to be around. I would also like to add, I'm coming as a parent, but I'm also a former high school teacher. And as a teacher, having students in a 7:45 a.m. class versus just the next period at 9:00 a.m., I found a large amount of those students in that 7:45 a.m. class coming in for extra help, which is a great life skill for these students to learn, but for them coming in on such a large amount, I started to notice that it was consistently those first-period students who needed to take out, take their lunch period away from themselves, they would eat a sandwich as I would help them. So I would add that to just our research gathering to, to know the students that need this extra help, be it before and after school, if it's consistently in that first-period class, because I did notice that as a teacher. I am not saying anything you have not already heard, just to review though, the American Academy of Pediatrics has recommended, all the way back in 2014.
Ann, that's two minutes, sorry.
Oh, two minutes, I'm done?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, well, thank you.
I'm so sorry.
Anyway, all right, well, you know where I stand on that, I just wanted to add my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Any other comments? All right, thanks. Next is announcements and future business. Dr. Lettsi?
Yes, so our, our next Board of Education meeting will be June 10th, where we'll have the Connecticut Association of Boards of Education Student Award, our recognition for retiring faculty and administration. We'll also have our athletic recognition, Jay Egan will be here to give us highlights and update on the year. And we're going also review progress on district goals. I also want to remind the board about our Memorial Day, so please reach out to Tori if you're planning to march in the parade, as we have before, and that's it. Oh, and senior internship starts tomorrow. So as of tomorrow, we'll have, what, 285-plus students out and about and going into their internships, and we wish them well as they go and explore this next phase of college, career, and life.
Great. Thank you. Next is a German to executive session in accordance with Connecticut General Statutes Subject to be discussed is personnel matters for the purpose of discussing the employment and/or performance of individuals who have been notified and who agree that it shall be held in an executive session. Can I have a motion? Penny? Jen? All those in favor? Great, thanks.